Support.
Ready?
Stand aside.
All right, we'll call to order the Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, April 15th, 2025 to order. Please rise as you're able and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. All right, next we will recognize the Assistant Manager to please give us the meeting procedures and the call to roll.
Thank you Chair, and thank you to the members of the board, staff, and public for joining us this evening for the April 15th regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. This meeting has been properly advertised in accordance with the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act as a hybrid meeting with the option to attend virtually and in person here in the main meeting room. If you are in attendance virtually using the WebEx platform and wish to speak on behalf of an agenda item, please say your name, municipality of residence, and the topic you wish to speak on when the chairperson calls on you. If you are attending in person with us in the main meeting room and wish to speak on behalf of an agenda item, please address the board at the podium and state your name, municipality of residence, and the topic you wish to speak on. Prior to commencing the meeting, I have a few short procedural items to cover. First, members of the public attending using the WebEx platform are asked to remain muted during the meeting to prevent any ambient noise from disrupting the meeting. If a member of the public is acknowledged by the chair, they may unmute their microphone for their question or comment. Secondly, board members are asked to indicate their name when motioning or seconding a motion so that the minutes may accurately reflect the action taken. Finally, a roll call of the Board of Supervisors will now be taken to ensure that all members can hear and interact using the WebEx meeting platform. Please indicate that you are here when your name is called. Ms. Strickland.
Here.
Ms. Stevens.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Mr. Patterson.
Mr. Heller.
Here.
Chair, you have a quorum.
All right, thank you. So this evening we have a series of announcements and proclamations to share. We will start with the proclamation of the Township of Ferguson, Senator County, Pennsylvania recognizing Arbor Day as April 25th, 2025. The proclamation, I was going to say, should I read the proclamation? How did we, former chair, how did we do this? Did somebody give a presentation, then we read the proclamation, or?
Yeah, if there's any, if there's any presentation, then, and then you can read it.
Okay.
You can read the proclamation.
Oh, we will recognize, we will recognize the arborist who brought the, brought the proclamation to the meeting tonight on, not on stone, but on lumber.
Very cool.
So.
I was in a bucket truck about a half hour ago, and, uh, thank you.
I guess you're here.
And I cleaned up, and so I didn't like to shovel this, but, uh.
For those that might be watching a meeting later, it was a little bit windy today and stormy, and it sounds like the arborist had to, uh, come to the rescue.
Yeah, mother nature turned a few of those. Anyways, just if I could just say a few words, I just wanted to.
Absolutely.
To this year's Arbor Day celebration, we've moved the location to Haymarket Park. We're kind of sharing the wealth. We did a couple years in Tudak, and now sharing it, and we've reached out to some of the neighborhood associations in the area, and, uh, and the way as well. Let's let you know it's a fun-filled event, family, you know, family oriented, lots of games, lots of tree-related activities, a tree walk. We'll put together a.
Be sure to grab the mic.
What's that?
Be sure to grab the mic.
Oh, you want the mic? Okay.
Yeah, that, that way everyone online can hear.
Okay, my apologies. This year, we intended was the Arbor Day festivities at Haymarket Park, kind of sharing the wealth, moving it to another location within the township. We've reached out to a number of the homeowners associations related to the area.
Very fun-filled, kind of family event. We have a self-guided bike tour, of course, the bucket truck rides with the lollipops in the trees, which is always a big hit. We're gonna have a tree walk hosted by the Chair of the Tree Commission, Mark McDill. Tree seedling giveaway. So we actually got some really large tree seedlings, red bud, American linden, and black gum, which we'll be giving away to anybody that attends. In addition, there'll be lots of arts and crafts, and, uh, Emma has helped us out. One of our AmerCor volunteers has helped us out and helped me with vendors, or tablers, I call them. So a lot of our partners, our nonprofit organizations, will be joining us as well, similar to the municipal mixer, where we have some tabling and, and things like that. So, um, it, it's gonna be a hoot. Last year it was a downpour, but we still had a great turnout and it was a good time. I put in a phone call. It's gonna be great. So, I hope to see you there. Okay?
Awesome.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else had any remarks? Just gonna say, thank, thank you for, we got buttons and, um, some handouts there, so, thank you. Um, so the proclamation this evening, I will, I will read it on this special, the proclamation reads as follows, whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting of trees, and whereas President Theodore Roosevelt in 1907 issued an Arbor Day proclamation to schoolchildren avowing that when you help to preserve our forest or to plant new ones, you are acting the part of good citizens, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day has since grown into a global event celebrating tree planting and care, and whereas the citizens of Ferguson Township are custodians of many thousands of trees of a variety of species which combat the effects of climate change, increased property values, lower utility costs, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, prolonging the lifespan of infrastructure and the beautify the community, and whereas the Ferguson Township recognizes that trees are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, the Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim Saturday, April 26th, 2025 to be Ferguson Township Arbor Day and urges all citizens to celebrate the support and support efforts to protect trees and woodlands in the community. Um, at this time, I would recognize a motion to move, to officially proclaim this proclamation.
This is Patty, so moved.
Do we have a second?
This is Matt, I'll second.
All right, got a motion by Ms. Stevens, second by Mr. Heller. All those in, any discussion?
Well, I was just going to ask, do we still have Tree City USA designation? Is that still a thing for us? Yeah?
Yes.
Awesome.
Yes.
Oh, great, wow.
Year nine.
That's great. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just gonna say, it's always a great event, the Arbor Day event that's put on, so looking forward to it.
Yes, truly. Well done, exciting.
That is great.
All right. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed say no? All right, the motion is hereby proclaimed this 15th day of April 2025 by the Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors. And I will sign this a little bit later. Next, a proclamation of the Township of Ferguson, Senator County, Pennsylvania to recognize May 2025 as Bike Month. And I believe we have a special guest here from Cogtonite, so welcome, Ms. Messner.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me. I do appreciate Ferguson Township doing this, and I always like it when it's in April because that gives people notice that Bike Month is coming in May. So I do appreciate that you're putting in the extra effort. Just something I wanted to share is I did distribute the four-foot distance rule, and that's just a reminder that when you are passing a cyclist, when you are in a vehicle, that you should do it when it is safe. It's not something that you can do immediately. You have to look on the horizon and see if there are oncoming vehicles. And there will be more cyclists out, especially as people start training for various events, including Ironman, which is going to happen in June this year. I will also be attending the Arbor Day event, so I'm looking forward to that, sharing information about cycling with your community. And that's all I have.
All right. Anyone else had any remarks? I was gonna say that anyone online is also welcome to join the conversations as well. You can raise your hand or just unmute and give me a hello, hello? All right, not CNA. Um, what's gonna say? Mr. Heller, do you wanna read the proclamation?
I can read the proclamation. So this is a proclamation of the Township of Ferguson, Senator County, Pennsylvania to support and promote May 2025 Bike Month. Whereas through the month of May, Ferguson Township will celebrate Bike Month, recognizing the freedom, joy, and well-being that biking brings to riders in our community, and whereas bicycling has been shown to enhance citizens' health, well-being, and overall quality of life while simultaneously boosting the economy of the center region by attracting tourism, supporting local businesses, and reducing pollution and traffic congestion on our streets and roads. And whereas, May 12th to 18th, 2025 is Bike to Work Week, with Friday, May 18th, 2025 recognized as National Bike to Work Day, and whereas Ferguson Township proudly supports the 2025 Bike Month events, which encourage both residents and visitors to embrace the joys of bicycling while promoting physical fitness and sustainable green transportation. And whereas Ferguson Township is proudly recognized as a bronze-level bicycle-friendly business, yeah, business, and the center region has earned a silver-level bicycle-friendly community designation by the League of American Bicyclists, and now therefore, the Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors does hereby designate the month of May 2025 as Bike Month in Ferguson Township, encouraging all residents to participate in this celebration of biking through a variety of events and activities. Proclaim this 15th day of April 2025.
All right. Do we have a motion to adopt this proclamation?
This is Patty, so moved.
Do we have a second?
This is Lisa, I'll second.
All right, got a motion by Ms. Stevens, second by Ms. Strickland. Any discussion?
Thanks for coming this evening.
Yeah.
Sharing though.
Thank you.
And I, I will say, I did see the street sweepers come through either today or yesterday, maybe it was today, which means more cyclists are going to be out on the road now that the cinders and things are being removed. So again, please keep an eye out for everybody. Thank you.
And, and actually, speaking of that, I just noticed somebody was mowing grass the other day, and it was being blown into the road. We wanna blow the grass not onto the road, so keep that in mind.
Yes.
All right, if no further discussion, all those in favor of adopting the proclamation, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed say no? Right, the motion, the proclamation is hereby proclaimed this 15th day of April 2025.
Sorry, I stole your thunder on that.
It's okay. It, it feels weird saying this is proclaimed when we haven't even voted on it yet.
I will, I will refrain the next time.
Um, a proclamation of the Township of Ferguson, Senator County, Pennsylvania to recognize May 4th to May 10th, 2025 as Public Service Week. Um, just gonna say, anyone here to?
Everyone that's here.
I was gonna say, everyone that's here.
Everyone that's here in public service work.
Absolutely, and I, I was gonna say, I, I, you know, looking at this proclamation, definitely welcome anyone, whether that's staff, ABC members, local partners, volunteers, public servants, or any community members that wanna give a few words, are free to do so. Otherwise, we, we really, really support all of you and thank you for your service and dedication to our community.
Yeah.
Mr. Heller?
I would say the unsung heroes, that's the part that, you know, anytime there's, hey, there's a little bit of a stoppage on this stream, could somebody take a look at it? The road's doing this weird thing, could somebody take a look at it? The building might be settling oddly, could somebody, like, always there and always appreciated. Thank you.
Nobody has any remarks? I would entertain, well, I guess I could read the proclamation. I will, I will read this proclamation here. Whereas every day, Americans are supported and served by dedicated public servants at the federal, state, county, and city levels. These unsung heroes perform the essential work that keeps our nation functioning, ensuring that our communities remain safe, our infrastructure is maintained, and our systems of governance run smoothly. Whereas public servants embody the spirit of service and through their work provide protection, care, keep our community orderly, and continuously strive to improve the quality of life for others. And whereas, public servants encompass a wide array of professionals, including teachers, doctors, scientists, nurses, laborers, computer technicians, social workers, and many others, who day in, day out, deliver the essential services demanded by the American people with unwavering efficiency and integrity. And whereas, since 1985, Public Service Recognition Week has been observed annually during the first week of May. And whereas this week serves to recognize and celebrate the invaluable contributions of the dedicated public servants who work tirelessly on behalf of all Americans. And whereas Ferguson Township values the commitment to, of the township's staff, authorities, boards, and commission members, local partners, and volunteers who are public servants working for the betterment of the community. And now therefore, the Ferguson Township Supervisors does hereby designate the week of May 4th through the 10th, 2025, as Public Service Week Recognition Week in Ferguson Township, and encourages all citizens to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of government employees at all levels. Do I have a motion to proclaim this proclamation?
This is Matt, so moved.
This is Patty, I'll second.
Right, got a motion by Mr. Heller, second by Ms. Stevens. Any board discussion?
I'm just gonna say thank you to everybody in this room, you know, for being public servants. I know there's a lot of, a lot is demanded and required from the citizens and others here, and I just wanna say truly, I appreciate that. And again, just thinking of friends and family that are also in the public service, again, thinking of them at this, throughout this time. Thank you.
Absolutely. I was gonna say, anything else?
I think you said it all, for me.
I, I didn't see the, that particular profession in here, but as somebody that came from a customer service background, having to work a lot of weekends and holidays and nights, just wanna, you know, give a shout out to our retail workers, restaurant workers, hospitality workers, all those that, you know, yeah, one may say, oh, it's just a job, you know, but without them, we wouldn't be able to have some of the nice amenities and areas of social gathering in the, in the township and throughout the region without them, and definitely thank them for their commitment to the places that they work, so. Got a motion on the table. All those in favor, say aye? Got a motion on the table. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed say no. All right, the motion is hereby proclaimed this fifteenth day of April 2025. All right, item 24, a proclamation of township of Ferguson Center County, Pennsylvania to recognize May 11th to May 17th, 2025 as Police Week. Just gonna say, do we, I see we have a few members in law enforcement in the room, as well as outside the room and throughout the township, so. Anyone that wants to come up and give a few words is free to do so.
Hi, I'm Dan Lewis. I'm a lieutenant with the police department. For those of you who don't know me, with me is Eric Albright. He's a sergeant with us. He's taking a break from a busy, stormy patrol shift as well to be here with you all. I try and learn something new every day, and today what I learned is our police department is truly spoiled. We get not only one week in May, but we get two back-to-back public service and then police week, so that's, that's wonderful. I wanted to thank the board. Each and every one of you have always, throughout your tenures, given us, been very supportive and been constant in that support, as well as the community behind you that placed you in those positions, so we appreciate that very much.
I'm good, I like it.
Ditto.
Anyone else had any remarks in the room or online? I was gonna say, does anyone want to read the proclamation?
I'm happy to.
Just gonna say, okay.
Yeah, okay. So again, a proclamation of the Township of Ferguson Center County, Pennsylvania to recognize May 11th through May 17th, 2025 as National Police Week. Whereas National Police Week in America was established to honor and recognize the sacrifices and contributions of police officers who serve and protect communities of all sizes. And whereas, National Police Week observed annually in May, was established in 1962 through a proclamation issued by President John F. Kennedy to honor the service and sacrifice of law enforcement officers across the nation. And whereas, our community will always value and commend the courage and dedication of police officers who risk their lives each and every day to uphold the rule of law and ensure the safety and well-being of all residents. And whereas, now more than ever, the community recognizes the values, the efforts of our police officers to foster community involvement, strengthen mutual trust, and build positive relationships and camaraderie within our increasingly diverse population in Ferguson Township. And whereas, police officers engage with and serve the public in diverse and wide-ranging capacities. And their dedication and service are recognized and deeply appreciated by the community. And now therefore, the Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim this week of May 11th through 17th, 2025 as National Police Week in Ferguson Township, and encourages all residents to join the township in the recognition of the services, sacrifices, and efforts of the Ferguson Township Police Department make to best serve the community.
All right, do we have a motion?
This is Patty, so moved.
This is Matt, I'll second.
Again, a motion by Ms. Stevens, second by Mr. Heller. Any discussion?
I just want to say thank you for all that you do. It's always rewarding to me when my daughter and I might be standing outside waiting for a school bus or something where there and an officer drives by, gives a wave, right? Little things like that that then build trust and appreciation in the community, I want to say go a long way. So thank you for always being there and sending a wave, you know, it's so important for everybody. And please just continue, hopefully everybody remains safe through whatever comes in the future. So again, just be safe out there. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Agreed, and thank you. And it's nice for us to have this opportunity to publicly thank you and to recognize all of your efforts, and it doesn't go unnoticed, and it's, it's just deeply appreciated.
I'll go there, thank you.
The past couple of years, the police department has come to our block parties, and it's always a big hit. So I welcome you again to come this year on June 28th to our block party at Overlook Heights. So, thank you.
Would miss it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, thank, thank you for attending those community events, whether it's coffee and conversation, the farmer's market, or even welcoming guests here at the station to show them around, and that's highly appreciated in our community and is very helpful as well to residents to be familiar with the police before they ever hopefully wouldn't need them, but you know, if they need them, you know, we appreciate you taking the call and doing what you need, so, thank you. All those in favor of adopting the proclamation, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. Okay, proclamation is hereby proclaimed this fifteenth day of April 2025. Thank you. And the final proclamation of the Township of Ferguson Center County, Pennsylvania to recognize May 18th to May 24th, 2025 as Public Works Week. And did we have a, okay. Well, we sure the public, well, Public Works had a busy day. I think they were, they went from lawn mowing to cleaning up debris and definitely thank them for that. I'll take a moment here and read this proclamation. Whereas Public Works, infrastructure, facilities, and services are essential to the health, safety, and overall well-being of the residents of our nation. And whereas these vital facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of Public Works professionals at all levels of government who are responsible for the, for the planning, design, construction, operation, and maintenance of transportation systems, water supply, wastewater treatment, public buildings, and other critical infrastructure that serves our residents. And whereas it is the pub, in the public interest for citizens and civic leaders to be informed about and actively engaged in the public works needs and programs of their communities, and to recognize the vital contributions Public Works professionals make in enhancing the quality of life in communities both large and small. And whereas the American Public Works Association is designated the week of May 18th to 24th as National Public Works Week in the theme of people, purpose, presence, to honor the contributions of Public Works professionals across the nation. And now therefore, the Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim the week of May 18th to 24th, 2025, as National Public Works Week in Ferguson Township, and urges all residents to join in recognizing the significant contributions made by Public Works personnel in safeguarding our health, ensuring public safety, and enhancing the quality of life for all members of our community. Can I have a motion on this proclamation?
This is, oh, go ahead, man.
Oh, please, no, happy Patty. I'll let Patty.
Oh, this is Patty, motion to approve the Public Works Week proclamation.
Do we have a second?
This is Lisa, I'll second.
Okay, got a motion by Ms. Stevens, second by Ms. Strickland. Any board discussion? Yes, Mr. Heller?
Those comments earlier about roads and everything can also apply here, the unsung heroes. Absolutely, even though it doesn't say that because, again, it goes unnoticed, all the work that goes on. And I just want to encourage folks to, as we stated with, you know, cycling too throughout our township, just be cognizant when you see construction going on on the roads. Our folks, our Public Works departments out there may be cleaning up debris from storms or patching roads or doing whatever they're doing, just please be vigilant and watch out for them. Thank you.
Anyone else? Just gonna say, the township does provide many public work services here, but also want to give a shout out to our partners at State College Borough Water Authority and UAJA. They're also, you know, big partner of providing municipal services to our community as well. We actually had the privilege of touring the UAJA facility, I think it was just last week. Not, not, not everything's pleasant, but it's beautiful to see water get reclaimed and we contribute to send, sending it back out as clean, clean, processing the waste and sending it out as clean water, so. Just, you know, big thanks to all those people that make all that possible. If no other comments, all those in favor of adopting the proclamation, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. All right, the proclamation is hereby proclaimed this fifteenth day of April 2025. And subject to the call of the chair, I will recess this meeting, I believe, probably for about approximately five minutes, if any one wants to get some photos and, yeah.
Move everyone over there.
All right.
Evil, almost, it's just like, yeah.
All right, the board is back in session. We'll now go on to item three, public comment. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the board with an item not on the agenda should ask to be recognized at this time. We kindly ask each person to keep their remarks to five minutes when speaking. We'll alternate between comments in the room and online. When speaking, please remember to state your full name and neighborhood of residence. Anyone in the room? And we'll go online. All right, not seeing any comments. We will then move on to item 4-1, the approval of minutes from the April 1st, 2025 Board of Supervisors Regular Meeting. Pending no corrections, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
This is Patty, so moved.
Got a motion by Ms. Stevens. Do we have a second?
This is Lisa, I'll second.
And a second by Ms. Strickland. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed say no. All right. The minutes have been approved. Item 5-1, our diversity, equity, and inclusionary activities. The month of April is Arab American Heritage Month, Child Abuse Prevention Month, Autism Awareness Month, World, then on April 2nd, we recognize World Autism Awareness Day. International Dark Sky Week is April 21st through the 28th. Good Friday will be this Friday, April 18th, 2025, followed by Easter on April 20th, 2025. And then Earth Day is April 22nd, Arbor Day, April 25th. And then, as we learned earlier this evening, the Ferguson Day Arbor Day event is April 26th, 2025. Item 5-2, the authorities, boards, and commission reports. The Human Resources Committee was canceled, so I have no report for you this evening. Item 5-3B, the Land Use and Community Infrastructure Committee, along with the Center Region Planning Commission, joint meeting. And we'll recognize our representative for that one.
Thank you. Yep, it was a joint meeting. We also did a Bike Month resolution. We also did a Bike Month resolution and had continued discussion on the comprehensive plan update. One item that we discussed is the future land use map and how feedback would be gathered on that and comments to update that. It was quite a lengthy discussion. Because we have just done a survey as part of the comprehensive plan update, so we were just discussing how to factor all of that information in. We just did the active transportation plan, how to factor that in. And so there's just already been a lot, plus our municipality, as well as others, I'm sure have their own official map. So just trying to kind of figure out how to coordinate all those different items so that work isn't getting duplicated and, you know, we're being as efficient as possible. So the action we had to take was what we pushed forward to the executive committee that will be on the general forum agenda is that presentation that we received on the future land use map. And then the municipalities will be asked how they want to discuss it, how they want their input collected. And they had a couple of options up there, if they want just, you know, to have an agenda item at our regular board meeting, a joint discussion. I had some questions about why that's going to be an agenda item at the general forum and why it wouldn't just be a discussion here for us, but anyways, it ended up with, it'll be a presentation. So it's just something we can all think about, how we want to proceed as a board. So once we get this presentation at the general forum, the question will come back to us, how do we want to relay our input on the future land use map? And then we will do that. So it was several steps to get to that end point. So there you go. And then we kind of went back over in the comprehensive plan. We had discussed our, the vision and had defined some vision statements for that. They're kind of being reworded and reorganized into these big ideas. So we had some discussion on that. That was that.
All right, any questions? Yes, Mr. Heller?
I guess my only more of a comment is that maybe we could consider following something like the finance committee and what we do with the CIP and everything and just saying, here's the window of time that's going to go to the municipalities and that we don't maybe overcomplicate things?
Yeah, yes.
Just leave it at that. So I think maybe that would probably be my recommendation after the presentation is just follow what we know, which is just give it to us at a certain window and we'll get back to you.
Yeah, I wasn't entirely clear on why it was coming back as a presentation at general forum and why it wouldn't just come as a question to the municipalities. But the one benefit is everyone will get this information on what the future land use map is. So if some are unfamiliar with it.
Thank you. And next we'll recognize Ms. Stevens of the Parks Capital Committee.
All right. So we had, we started off our meeting with a presentation from a donor tracking software company. I think that they were doing this, it's, it's looking at the funding. So the priorities really for the Parks Capital at this point are funding for Hess and the Millbrook Marsh Boardwalk. And we all sort of had agreed that probably the Hess bathroom funding thing is something that would take, go before Millbrook Marsh Boardwalk, only in terms of the economic value that the Hess fields bring to us. You know, that the tournaments that come in, they bring regionally more of an economic bang for the buck as opposed to Millbrook Marsh. So sort of prioritizing that. And in regards to the, the luxury trailer that had been discussed and approved, that in June, I think, one of their early on events, they're renting one of those luxury trailer bathrooms for Hess fields to see if that particular model, as opposed to the luxury, the high-end one or the medium-sized one. So that will be in place for an early tournament, just to get a feel for if that's going to meet the needs of, of what they need. Let's see. What else did we discuss? Oh, we discussed that the projects, we all agreed that the projects will need to be phased. That's because the price tags on those are significant. And in particular with Hess, there are some obstacles like growth boundaries and such that we need to work out. And then in terms of overall funding, I think we all agree that there's, particularly with the Millbrook Marsh Boardwalk, we're really going to need to look at public-private partnership and in particular, you know, maybe a funding strategy of like one-third municipal funds, one-third private funds, and one-third grant funding for anything that, that we come up with. And that was basically where we left it. If you have any questions, I'm happy to do my best to try and answer them.
You can go first.
Are you sure?
They have questions.
I think my biggest thing is with Millbrook Marsh. And one of the things that I'd still like to see is all the stakeholders getting together and just talking about the issue and the repairs as one collective. Again, Penn State's involved, outside donors are involved, the cog is involved, municipalities are involved, but nobody, and this isn't, I think, anyone's fault, but we haven't had a sit-down as stakeholders to just talk about what do we want to do here? And it just seems so piecemeal to me that, I don't know, even if we all wanted theoretically to support it, I don't know how I could in good conscience without understanding a little bit more and who's going to be doing what. And if we're not sitting together talking about it, how can we ever move that forward?
I agree. I agree. I, I would love to have seen it on, you know, just have a hash out at one of our general forum, something that could be on the general forum agenda. I would love that. I would welcome that, and I will certainly take it back to the group. If the executive committee wants to hear our plea, they can do that. But I agree with you. The one thing they did, they did repeat that there had been discussions with Penn State and that in terms of funding, there wouldn't be any support there, but otherwise.
So that's good information. If Penn State is no longer at the table, then that reduces the amount of communication paths that we need and maybe decisions are made differently or quickly. I, again, I just wish we could all get together and just talk about it.
I agree.
Well, that is important to know. If Penn State is not going to be a partner in that. And so I think, I think that's a significant piece of information. So, yeah, my concern then is, you know, what's going to show up on the CIP and in the budget for this? And if some of these strategies are, are being talked about, and I know the Park Authority will meet, I guess, this week and kind of review that, they don't have a say, I guess, in, in that strategy. I'm not entirely sure about the agenda item, what, what that if is just a presentation that the capital committee is determining, so maybe that's a, maybe it's a question.
Well, I mean, it's been, so as part of then the, the governance committee, it is very clear that we are just funding, like we don't make any of these decisions. So if we are, in terms of funding strategies and saying we need to phase this and that, again, to your point about having to have this big discussion, it had been hinted at maybe one-third public, one-third private funds, one-third grants, that would be what maybe we would be comfortable with or something along those lines. But we are just coming up with funding. That's, any decisions above and beyond that, you know, is, is the authority.
But, and that's helpful, too, to know that that's even being considered as a strategy for, for both of those projects, I think. So the third, maybe. So maybe what is beneficial to us to kind of plan for and be prepared is for us in our own discussions to establish what we're willing to contribute. We've got ballpark numbers on all these projects. So we've got a high-end number, you know, we had a six million to 10 million on the boardwalk. And we know we're about a quarter of the contributions to Parks things. So, so we can, you know, we can get some kind of ballpark idea of what, what's going to be asked of us. So maybe if we decide what we're comfortable in contributing over the course of our CIP, that may be a better way for us to go about it because, you know, the Parks Capital Committee as a whole is going to decide a strategy, but we, we know what we're able to provide, you know, what's going to be feasible for us. So, you know, I'd, I'd encourage us to consider that when we get into CIP.
I agree. But my fear is, is that we are one of, of what, five? And so what we may say, this is what we're willing to maybe, again, to Matt's point about needing a group discussion about who's willing or how much money each individual municipality is willing to put forward. So, and this might be a good discussion, too, to have with our Parks Authority rep because I think we had this discussion briefly about the boardwalk in particular, the, the numbers, the six to 10 million dollar range. That, to me, when I think back on that, those presentations, that was always about the replacement cost. But I'm not sure, did that include like tearing out the old boardwalk? Like, do you know what it means?
There were a lot of different proposals, yeah.
There were a lot of different questions I had that.
An expansion was included in one of those proposals, too, so.
So I, I think it's, to Matt's point, time for a big group discussion.
Yeah, it is. But I think, I think we're going to have to establish some, some parameters on what we're willing to contribute over, you know, the course of a number of years.
I agree.
To these things, so.
Thank you.
Ninety cents with a $3 million multiplier. Sorry, I've learned about multipliers recently.
But yeah, thanks, thanks for that report and thanks for working on that committee.
Yeah. And, and the other thing, too, about the boardwalk, and this has came up a few times, is what about aspects of climate change or even continued growth? Because it is an area where, it's a flood plain, but also as we grow more, it seems like more water infiltrates into the marsh. So, you know, it's not like I could just throw, build something out there and, you know, look away. It's gonna only be able to hold up for as long as you build it and for whatever price you put on it. So I am hearing you're looking for like a larger discussion. Executive committee agenda is not yet set.
So. If you're asking me about that, when I say larger discussion, it's really the stakeholders and maybe it's just a representative from those different stakeholders. But first, confirming the stakeholders is an important one. Who do we need at the table? Okay, Penn State now is no longer at the table. That changes the conversation. Who are those stakeholders that have to be involved? And that, that is probably going to take some time to identify. I would hate to go into it almost willy-nilly and just say, well, everybody get in the room and we'll figure this out.
Well, I think that the advisory committee, so that the stakeholders are the Millbrook Marsh Advisory Committee, which is, is, it is online. And I remember having a discussion about who is on that and how, how do people get on it? So it is one of those things that if it is a, a discussion at general forum, which I think it's good that more ears and, and more voices are heard, you know, more ears hear and more voices speak up about it, the stakeholders and the Millbrook Marsh Advisory Committee can be invited to that meeting.
Trying to think how I want to go about this, if I want to just pull in the executive director, just recapping what we've stated and then maybe kind of waiting for him to come up with some suggestions for later on. I, I wouldn't even have a problem really kind of even maybe bringing it up at executive committee and kind of getting a pulse from those in the room. Or, you know, even planting the seed that this discussion kind of like goes out into individual municipalities. So there is a little bit of.
I think as we all get into.
Because it sounds like we need to, we need to tee it up. We can't necessarily just get in and go.
No, and what I would say is this, I don't think it's our responsibility to do that. I think somebody needs to step forward and being a project manager, somebody needs to be identified as honchoing this thing. One person to say, we are going to figure this out and we're going to pull in project management experience and other things that we know how to do. And the first step is identifying the stakeholders and they're responsible for doing that. And then they take the next step. But if I were to ask, well, who's in charge of wrangling all this? What's the answer today?
Parks Director.
Well, Parks Director or the authority, it's, 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 it's hard to know.
So they'd need to, in my mind, maybe just appoint somebody. This is your project manager for this one. We've got to figure it out and figure out funding for it. That's the deliverable. And then they, they, they take charge and start rolling with this stuff. But for us to keep, I mean, we can push for that, but I think that's a logical next step is somebody needs to be identified to really be responsible and accountable for solving this.
I think there's your lead for approaching the executive director.
And somebody that can be a constant.
Yeah.
I won't name things, but I guess there, I, I am aware there was other projects where there was like a, a lead, but it became multiple leads and.
I guess that's why I'd be hesitant for anyone other than the Parks Director to handle it, because she does the budget for the parks. She's, you know, she's, you know, oversees what the authority has on their agenda and with the chair of the authority and so.
Or at least, you know, at least, at least be in the loop to, you know, yeah, somebody to keep, keep, keep it all going along. So.
Yeah, and I'm happy to share ideas with this. Again, this is stuff I don't mind talking about if it helps move things along.
I think that's enough. I, I thank you. I, I being cognizant as your executive committee chair to, you know, yeah, make sure we're represented. And I think, I think it's a rather, you know, you, you bring rather solid ideas. So why not look at it, look into it? Next up, yeah, if there was no other questions or comments, I will recognize our Public Safety Committee representative, who I believe has joined us online.
Good afternoon. Please say my apologies. I'm a long day at the office and just getting out. Public safety. So good work on, on public safety. There's some attention and focus on kind of the, the kind of regional plan on a public safety perspective. I would just encourage everybody to, well, to take a look at the, the, the meeting. There were a couple of things to highlight. And I'm drawing a blank as I go to sift through my notes. So actually, you know what, can you come back to me, Mr. Chair? That earlier than I anticipated, because I'm getting in my car.
Yeah, we've got two, two more reports. Does that, is that enough time? Otherwise, I was going to say we can even entertain questions if that helps jog your memory. Next up, we will recognize our representative for the Finance Committee. I believe that's Mr. Heller.
I'll go ahead and do the Finance Committee and the Climate Action Committee, say no action.
Just do the rest of the committees.
Omar is back to you. So we'll jump into the Finance Committee. Couple different things. We started the conversation off relating or trying to understand any federal impacts to some of the grants, et cetera. We understand that the Institute of Museum and Library Services, IMLS, there might be some funding changes due to the new administration. um, there might be some funding changes due to the new administration. Jim Saylor also noted that he doesn't expect significant impact, uh, when it comes to CRPA. But, um, that's kind of how we started. We did approve the budget timeline. Um, and I just want to thank Madam Manager for reaching out and having the conversation about timing. Because I just, again, making sure everything's in sync. So you reaching out to COG and having that conversation. So we understood where things were, very much appreciated. So thank you after that last meeting. What we did is again, we, we approved the, or we endorsed the budget timeline. But there is an amendment to the motion where due to Russia Shana, uh, we're asking that the executive committee kind of move their meeting to September 18th so that we would, um, you know, follow on. We would actually go right, I'm sorry, maybe my timing is mixed up here. We would be able to, I've been trying to look over my own notes here and make sense of them as well. Oh yeah, so we would have the finance committing working session that day as well. Again, just looking at the timing on that. So we did reach out or I guess executive committee will be asked shortly to maybe change the date. The idea would also be like we did last year. It would go directly, um, to the general forum. You know, after the budget gets reviewed, approved, et cetera. The budget amended request, there was, um, we approved the duty officer vehicle. I should say, let me not say it that way. We recommended to the executive committee the consideration to approve, um, the duty officer vehicle for about $97,000. It is in the CIP. It was just moved forward because of the need. And of course, we can talk about the need if, if folks were wondering what that was. We also talked about the safe streets for all, um, where there's going to be an assessment in two different areas focusing on sidewalk gap analysis, which will be done countywide, which municipalities could then use to inventory things or understand where gaps may exist or issues. And then also looking at lane departures, which are the highest rate of accidents, in the safe streets initiative, or at least as they've identified. So again, all this helps with filling gaps with grants and other things to support safe streets. Then there was a funding balance, uh, policy update. And what I'll share there is that, um, what we were thinking of doing in what we're going to be doing is taking each part of the fund balance. So each area, be it facilities, be it parks, whatever it may be, and looking at them individually and figuring out based on risk and history, et cetera, where the right day, with, what the right reserve would be for those individual, for those individual departments. Be it 45 days of funding, 30 days of funding, 60 days of funding, et cetera. So we're going to have conversations going forward, taking each single department and figuring out what the fund balance policy should be for those departments. What I've recommended is that we look at this kind of like a fundraising thermometer. You know, where are we now? Well, we're only at the 30 day mark, but we need to have 60 days. Okay, so what's our plan to get to 60 days? You know, increase that thermometer. So a little bit of a different community engagement, uh, making things a little bit more understandable in that space. And then finally, um, there was also, just as a matter of record, a discussion around the fact that the active adult center is approximately $30,000 short of funding um, due to some changes, uh, from the county. So $30,000 short and we anticipate future discussions around that. That's everything. It's a lot. Happy to go ahead, dissect or jump into anything I just said.
I had a question about that, um, funding shortfall from the county at the active adult center. And do you know when any decisions will be made about that funding? Cause you had sort of said maybe either municipalities or cutting services and.
That's all we know at this point. This was kind of a pay attention for and let's look for future conversation around. So it was really just putting a pin in it for another conversation. But something I could take back to ask when and how.
Right, right, okay. Again, that, this is that, one of those things where it falls in the cracks, right? It's, it's either one or the other. Because the programming and things like that, that's an authority decision. We're just strictly funding. So we either are or we are not. And then what happens from there is, is on the authority. Or for them to, so anyway.
Thank you, I will take that back.
Okay.
Yeah. In fact, that's apropos of something that I had asked was, could we in our agenda have a what's on the horizon agenda item every month? So we can say, oh yeah, this, by the way, expect this in the next month or two to come up. So I'm trying to also plant the seed for us, again, thinking further down the road. Then all of a sudden the agenda pops up a couple of days in advance and go, oh, what are, what are we talking about? But let's really be more planful in that.
Yep, that was my question as well, was, was notice provided to the committee from the county? Or how did this even come about?
That is a great question. Again, it was brought in as a matter of record and, oh, pay attention to this one item at the end. And we went, okay.
And that's for next year's allocation, okay.
So again, it's the infancy of the conversation, uh, I would say. More to follow.
I guess, yeah, that would be the takeaways. Is, uh, interested in details on that?
I think we all are.
Yeah. I, I, I just find that interesting because the county has decided to contribute to center care. But now we're hearing they're reducing their contribution for the active adult center. And it looks like the manager has something to say.
Well, you know, I certainly want to be mindful that it's not my area of, um, constant involvement. Uh, but I do, I do recall there being some, some conversations about changes to the, um, active adult center among the managers and with the county. And, and I'm not sure if, and, and, you know, Supervisor Heller may know more than I do, but I'm not sure if it has to do with the, the changes uh, as a result of having increased participation or as a result of the county reducing their funds or maybe a combination, I'm not sure. I know the county has their own services that they provide. Uh, and the contribution, uh, that they provide for COG services, active adult center are separate from additional services that they host and provide to the county. So I'm not sure. I know that there had been some conversations as well as an idea that came from our discussion to partner with Center Foundation. And partnering with Center Foundation to explore some, some funding strategies. And so I'll share with you, the managers are also actively contributing with some suggested ideas that may or may not be considered, uh, by COG, so.
Great, now that, that's great information. All this will help me have a more intelligent conversation, so I appreciate that.
Just going to say if there's nothing else, how, how's climate, climate action sustainability?
Climate action sustainability. So, uh, one of the things we talked about, the, the regional greenhouse gas. I will say, um, in some ways, you know, looking at the levers that we have when it comes to maybe transportation or solar. It does appear, and we don't have specifics on this until we get the annual progress report from COG, but it looks like our 2030 goals, I seem to, it's, it's indicating right now that we're probably going to be falling short of our climate goals that we have for 2030. Again, that, those are my words. But just from the presentation alone, you can start to see that maybe we're not going to be there. Now, I'm saying that as a preemptive though, that is without having the annual progress report, uh, in, in front of us. So this was done, the, the inventory, um, by other representatives. So Dr. Peter Buck and others were involved in there as well as students, et cetera, gathering information on that. Oh, the other thing with the new refuse contract, of course, a lot of changes. And the big thing that I want to bring forward here is that, uh, first off, staff are definitely answering a lot of calls. There have been over 6,000 calls to, um, COG staff trying to resolve or ask questions. One of the things that I know we've seen information about is the, the, the RFIDs, are the radio frequency identif, identifier, ah, radio frequency identifiers or RFIDs that are on each can. There have been questions about rights and privacy around that. And what I learned is that the RFIDs only contain the serial number, or I should say the serial number, whatever it might be, of the can. It does not contain personal information, et cetera. It doesn't have your billing information because all of that is done by CCRRA. All of our billing is done through them, not through Birdmires, the haulers. So remember our, our bills come from a different place. So it does not have any personal information. It's only an RFID or RFID for the can in case it gets blown down the street and like the serial number gets scratched off. Who owns it? Yep. And we also learned that the garbage trucks have, I think, five cameras on them. They see everything. So that was an interesting one too. But yeah, a lot of technology. And, and one of the things the COG staff just wants us to know and to communicate to residents is just, just patience as we learn and figure out the new system. Things are, are going as smoothly as they can. There's going to be room for improvement, just patience. We're all trying to figure this out together. Also, last thing, there is an open house, uh, related to, uh, to the hauler and everything that's going to be held tomorrow evening and the 17th. So the 16th and 17th, there's one right now actually, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM at Transfer Road. So the, uh, the facility in Balfont. Folks want to attend and have more questions or want in more information about what's going on. That's it.
I just, I had had a question about, um, the bulk items that can be in, placed in the cart versus what has to be collected from a call, a special call for pickup. So maybe just a little more clarification, um, to residents about that. What, what exactly are they saying? Because it said something like regular bulk items can be placed in the cart, you know? And is that bagged or, you know, what's, and also, yeah, I guess also what's the bagging requirement there? So those were a couple of questions I'd gotten.
Great, and I will take those back.
My, my understanding, they want it, they want the trash to be bagged because otherwise anything loose, it's kind of, especially I imagine on a windy day, going to blow all over the place. So it's kind of to just keep everything contained so it's going into the truck and not all over the place.
And that was the question, yeah, about the bulk, the regular bulk items that were to be placed in there, so.
And yeah, that, that is a good question because you can't just put anything that would fit in the can because there's obviously some stuff that can go different places or should not be going into a landfill due to safety or environmental reasons, so.
Thank you for that, Mr. Thompson. I will remind my children to stop throwing their cups and other things loosely into the garbage can.
Yeah, especially, yeah, especially the cups. I could see those all over the place. You have anything, Patty?
Nothing, thank you.
Um, if there is nothing else, uh, we'll go back to Mr. Patterson.
Excellent. Thank you. And, uh, there were two main highlights. Number one, there were just some appointments recommended to the executive committee meeting, number one. And number two, what Mr. Heller actually just recommended, or we just noted, was that we recommended approval of the, the funds moving to a vehicle purchase now and not later. Um, just a little bit more detail on that. They just kind of swapped a few things so to keep it within budget. But that was the, the major, uh, change there. There was kind of some talk about how it was, I would say, uh, not fully, decided based on tariffs, but that was certainly a reason to, to go ahead and do it now, unfortunately. But the major reasons were, there were some other vehicles that they could use and, uh, decided that this would lead to kind of longer term savings. And that's all I have for public safety, over.
Any questions?
I do. Omar, I have a question about public safety and the center alert system and, and the use of it. Like today, for instance, would have been a great time to get a center alert about the, that storm that rolled in and knocked out power. And our power is restored, by the way. I just was getting texts about it. How is that going to work? Particularly as I read more on a national level that maybe there'll be some funding cuts to severe weather alerts? And how is center alert going to work for us?
So center alert, uh, I think that was in maybe last month's discussion. Uh, but, uh, we'll need to maybe get, get a little bit more wholesome there. But it, it, this was what I recall from last month was that center alert is up. And for people that have updated their, their information for center alert, you can kind of get, uh, even have an app where it'll alert everyone within kind of the, a given space or everyone within a given, um, location, based on their location will send alerts. But it requires humans to actually go ahead and make that, that kind of opt in for those alerts. And so maybe that's kind of a future kind of, um, addition to communications from the township to our residents based on kind of that, that county, that count, the workflow in which, uh, center alert works. So I can, I, I can definitely have it for next month per, you know, as, based on that question and, and provide it to Manager Martin.
Thank you.
Yeah, that, that is a good point. And I, I have actually enrolled in center alert. And that's actually, I'm, I'm really impressed because you can give basically center alert a lot of information either about yourself or your home that is, that is actually even useful should you or someone in your household have to call 911. Uh, they, they can find out, you know, whether you have like, and that is if you supply the information, whether you have gas heat or, um, you know, specifics about your house or even like if you have like a medical condition or something. So, you know, helpful stuff because in the event of an emergency, if somebody doesn't really, if it's like your neighbor or somebody that doesn't really know about you, you know, it does give our first responders a little bit of information so they can better understand what they're, uh, handling. Um, but also in the event of an emergency, sometimes, and I learned this from being in Boy Scouts, sometimes, you know, so much adrenaline and nerves are running that you sometimes even don't even know your street addresses. You're trying to, you know, call for help. Uh, so, you know, that, that does provide a lot of that important emergency information to their system when you, you call. But again, it's on what you provide, you know? So I definitely encourage people to look into that. And yeah, today's storm was relatively quick, came in relatively quick. I was actually looking back at some notifications. Uh, National Weather Service, they issued a, a special weather statement at like 1:30 and then eight minutes later, they were issuing a severe thunderstorm warning. And I think they were identifying it had just developed on, over by Pennsylvania Furnace and was just, so it, you know, kind of really came, came around quickly. So. Any other questions or remarks for public safety?
No, I just, about the center alert thing, um, you know, as I was saying, I've gotten some center alert texts in the past. I didn't get one related to this storm, but like, for instance, um, I had neighbors who were going out to the Weiss, but the Weiss was closed because there was no power. And it, you know, in situations like that, that whole what regional aspect is what I was thinking. Like that's the sort of thing. You'd sent me the pictures of where the outages were.
Oh, yeah, the outage.
And, and that would have been good to know because it would save people from going to the Weiss that was closed or something, you know? So.
That was interesting because even Senator County 911, they posted something on their Facebook page, but like, do they have capabilities or power to be able to send something out? Even, even directing people to a landing page. Severe thunderstorm came through and you got a power outage, you called this number and just, you know, directing people on what, you know, what, you know, where to go to get information or to report something. So, yeah.
Anyway, thank you. Thanks, Omar.
Imagine that system even has like some type of integration with like National Weather Service that you can get National Weather Service alerts too. And speaking of funding, last I heard it was like around $4 a person funds National Weather Service, which is relatively inexpensive and does provide a wealth of information, but also information that has been known to save lives and property. And, you know, it'd be a shame to see them, uh, lose funding. Right, there's nothing else, I'll move to item five for the department reports and I'll recognize the manager.
Thank you, Chair. Provided with the agenda packet is a copy of the department report and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions?
I have a couple.
Yes.
Um, just on the, uh, the gold status on, um, sustainability. If you could just, um, share, was this, this was a renewed application under the new criteria?
Yes, I do believe that there was an update to the criteria. There were some additional, um, statements that had to be provided. I know there had to be a statement from the manager on sustainability. Um, there were several, um, I would, I would consider them minor alter, um, updates to the criterion. But we were able to, with the assistance of our AmeriCorps position, um, our executive assistant and, uh, actually there were several members within the township that provided support to get our application through the finish line. And so we were able to retain our status, our gold status.
That's great.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to confirm that it was the new reap, the new reapplication, the updated application. Because there were higher standards for the new revised application. So that's really, um, impressive and, um, I appreciate everyone going through that process. So that's a, that's very good. And then I wanted to ask about the ABC training, um, and additional training to the planning commission. I know CRPA is going to be hosting some things. I just wanted to make sure that got out and just check and see what, if the new planning commission members and alternates that they've received and, you know, whoever has received some
The training.
Additional, uh, specific things for their committees.
Yes, uh, great, great questions. Uh, so I believe our Director of Planning and Zoning at the last planning commission shared, shared the training dates and, uh, I believe they also probably received it through CRPA as well. So there's been several notifications and invitations for folks to sign up and attend. And I'm seeing our Director of Planning and Zoning. Excuse me? Wonderful. So an email was sent to each individual planning commission member with an invitation to attend the trainings.
Do you know, whoever, if those would be recorded so that, um, they can be watched another time? That was, um, because that's good even for new board members, for anybody. Uh, those are just really incredibly, um, it looked like some very broad, um, uh, topics that are, we're going to be discussed. So, um, yeah, if we can get those recorded and maybe links sent out to whoever.
We can inquire and see if they're recording it. And if they are, we can ask if they send it to the municipality so we can send it on.
That'd be great. So I know there is an online, uh, resume that option. So hopefully they can get those recorded. Thanks very much.
Great question. Any other questions or comments?
Anything else? Just gonna say, in, in, in response to an earlier question or comment from a coffee, I believe coffee and conversation earlier in the year, it does look like you are now, there, there is some action underway for audio enhancements in the room. Uh, so, um, we're looking forward to those and it's still about a month or so out.
Actually, uh, we're scheduled to begin the updates, I believe, this week.
Okay.
Possibly as early as tomorrow. We'll have folks here, uh, beginning to move some wires around and ripping out the old system and, uh, beginning to put in the new system. So hopefully it'll be in place and ready to launch.
I, I was
For the next meeting.
I was going to give a shout out to see that and I no, noticed some, uh, gestures back there indicating that they're looking forward to the update as well because they'll be able to just plug and play instead of having to set up their own equipment to, uh, get their, the audio feed from us. So, uh, Sea Nut's looking happy as well. Less setup and teardown. And yes, less tripping hazards. Any other remarks, questions, comments? There is no unfinished business this evening, so we will move to item seven one with the consent agenda. Bearing nobody has any items they want to.
I just have a question on it before you ask for a motion.
Uh, sure.
There are two board member requests in the packet, but only one listed. Was it the same topic or is one, it's one item?
I, I would say I, because it seems like they're really addressed that, but mine overlapped. So I was
There, there was There was a significant overlap in that particular, in those particular requests that subject to the call of the chair, uh, it was recommended that that be one agenda item. So.
Okay, yep, that's what I wanted to clarify. Then we were missing one. Great.
I prefer not, mine not being associated with Patty's.
All right. So the, if nobody has anything to pull tonight on the consent agenda, we have the acceptance of the treasury report, the approval of the video surveillance and retention policy for inclusion in the employee personnel manual, and a word of a contract for pavement markings and an approval for the Science Park Road Sandy Drive Signal Pay application, as well as a board member request of a review and discussion on accessory dwelling units. Again, this board member request, uh, was two separate requests, one coming from Mr. Heller and one coming from Ms. Stevens with a lot of overlapping themes that subject to the call of the chair. Those were combined into one, um, will be combined into one item for efficiency and, uh, consist, cohesion of dialogue, so.
I'm sorry, we think alike, Patty.
I'll entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
This is Patty, so move.
Do we have a second?
This is Matt, I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Stevens, second by Mr. Heller. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any, any opposed, say no. Okay. Item seven two, the presentation on the National League of Cities Service Line Program and approval to sign National League of Cities Service Line Agreement. And the manager is recognized.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, this evening we have with us Ashley Shorowski. Uh, she's with National League of Cities. She is the regional, uh, representative for NLC and will be, uh, presenting to the Board of Supervisors. A, uh, a benefit to being an NLC member is the NLC Service Line Program. Provided with the agenda are some copies of the information that she's provided, included her, including her presentation um, and talking a little bit about the program. So as elected officials, you all can get clarification, ask questions, and we can better, uh, you know, engage our citizens with this program as an additional benefit. And so I'll go ahead and, and yield the floor to Ashley.
Yeah, well, thanks, everyone, for allowing me, um, to join this evening. Um, my name is Ashley Shorowski, um, and I do represent, um, the National League of Cities Service Line Program. Just, I shouldn't be sharing my screen. I think everyone should see it and I know, um, since Tree's mentioned it's in your packet. Um, but yeah, thanks again for having me here. Um, uh, as I did mention, we do administer the National League of Cities Service Line Program. So we are one of the National League of Cities Savings and Solutions Programs. We've been, uh, lucky to operate and provide this service here, um, for over 20 years and been partnered with the National League of Cities since 2010 to provide the program. But the company I do work for is called HomeServe and we administer the program. Um, and I'm located just on the other side of the state. I'm right outside of Pittsburgh here. Um, but just to give the group a little background of how this program was developed is, obviously, we all know aging infrastructure is an issue for communities all across the US. Um, and we know municipalities are doing their best to either upgrade or maintain their public infrastructure. But homeowners' portion of these water and sewer lines were kind of being forgotten about. Not on purpose. We just know there's only so much, um, that, uh, a township or authority could do on that private side or force one of your residents to do on that private side. So that's really why the National League of Cities went out and did research. They wanted to make a program like ours readily and easily available to municipalities all across the country. So they went out, did the research on your behalf, and we were the company that they did choose to provide this program. So what we do is we partner with municipalities in order to pro, provide our completely optional protection available to your residents, really just providing them a service that they otherwise do not have. Um, and we provide completely optional protection on their external water or well lines, sewer or septic lines, and their in-home plumbing. And we always provide these services with a complete turnkey approach for the township where we handle all the aspects of the program. So we do the marketing, the billing, the claims management and customer service. And there is no cost to the township to make this protection available to your residents, as well as the township does receive an incremental revenue stream for their participation. Um, what I though always think is the best benefit of this program and what I hear from municipalities all over the country is that most residents don't even realize that these water and sewer lines buried in their front yard are their responsibility until they actually have an issue. And then they're often looking to the township for advice or, um, for help to, when they have that issue, expecting it's someone else's responsibility. So that's really why I think of this program as a free public awareness campaign because all of your residents would receive a letter in the mail from us and the beginning of that letter is educational. So that way, even if a resident does not enroll in the protection, at least now in the future, they're well prepared, um, to know exactly which portion of these lines that they're responsible for. And just that the township did really try to take this proactive approach and help and educate them of that. Um, so that way, if they still call you, it just makes the conversation a little bit easier for everyone there. Also, a large benefit of our program is that we do only use local area plumbers to do all of our work. And we do that for a lot of reasons. Mainly we want to keep as much money there within your local economy as possible. But also your local plumbers would be familiar with your local codes and make sure to do the work up to our standards and yours, which would include to get all of the proper permits for the repairs. And what would happen, um, is if we partnered with the township, we actually would develop a contractor network to serve your residents' claims. And the group could be as much or as little involved in that process as they want to be, where some partners provide us a list of plumbers that they're familiar with, already working with or that are well-known in the region, and some don't want to get involved. Either way is fine with us. Um, but with all of our plumbers, um, we do go through a vetting process verifying, you know, they're from the local community, they meet licensing requirements, have the proper insurance, as well as we do conduct background checks and drug screenings. Um, you know, because we always want to make sure that it's someone that your residents feel completely comfortable with coming to their home as well as inside of their home. Um, and I do know we already have, um, some plumbers in the local area. I know we've been partnered with State College Borough for, for, um, at least 10 plus years. So I know we have, um, been servicing residents in the region for a long time. Um, but to kind of let you know what our program covers is we offer three completely separate involuntary protections. And really by partnering with us, you're just making these options available to your homeowners there that otherwise would not be. But it's always up to a homeowner if they enroll, as well as what products that they enroll into. They're all completely separate and optional. The first two that I will talk about are the external options, just because they're set up almost identically. So if one of your residents decides to enroll in either the external water line protection or the external sewer line protection, we beco, cover those lines wherever they begin to be their responsibility, all the way to where they enter their home. So that way, if a homeowner is having an issue, whether it's a broken, a crack, a leaking pipe, a tree root issue, a clog, really anything that impedes the flow of the lines. We also do cover the thawing of frozen external water lines. So if a line were to freeze, that homeowner just has to make a call to us. Um, and we'll send someone out to thaw that line or obviously if freezing causes damage, we also repair or replace the line as needed. But what your residents receive for the coverage if they decide to enroll is up to $8,500 towards each and every repair incident. So that is something that greatly separates us from other companies out there is that ours is always on a per-incident basis. So we never have an annual or a lifetime limit, as well as we never limit the number of incidents or claims that they can have. So again, they do receive up to that $8,500 towards each and every incident. That does in, include street repair, if that's the resident's responsibility, sidewalk repair, um, any permitting costs that may be associated with getting their issues taken care of. And we do not have any type of service fee or deductible. Um, you know, because we just never want that to stop one of your residents from actually giving us a call and getting their issues taken care of. And then in addition to those external options, we also do offer an in-home plumbing. And this really was developed by request of our municipal partners, as it was that missing piece of the puzzle. And this covers any of the water sewer or drain lines that are in your residence home after the point of entry that could be broken or leaking. It also includes lines that may be embedded under a slab or basement floor and the repair of clogged toilets. And our in-home plumbing is similar to the two external options where there's no service fee or deductible, no annual or lifetime limit, no limit on number of claims. And with our in-home, your resident does receive up to $3,000 towards each and every repair incident. And we really do come to find that when someone enrolls in any of these options, they're just a little bit more proactive about getting their issues taken care of. Um, because we know a lot of times a resident is nervous to call a plumber because they don't know how much it's going to cost them or can't find someone to come to their house in a timely fashion. But now they know the cost of determining their issue and getting it taken care of isn't coming out of their pocket. And then lastly, I know the big thing everyone wants to know is what's the township's involvement in the program? So we really do handle all of the aspects. Um, the township is simply making this program available to the residents that otherwise would not be. Um, but what we do is we enter into a marketing agreement with the township and that just lays out the way that we get the word out about the program, which is through direct mail. Um, and that is your involvement. Before we send anything out to your residents, we would work with you all to customize that specifically for the township. We work with you on any edits and changes that you may like to see in that information. And then once we get the approval, we let you know the dates that we would nail those out. That way, um, you all here know what your residents are receiving, have input on that. Um, and we never send anything out unless we have your review and approval prior. So the agreement clearly states that we don't mail unless we have your approval. It also limits the mailings to no more than three per year. We typically mail two per year, um, but the agreement states no more than three. Um, and then your involvement again is really that customization. And then once we get the approval, we let you know the dates that we will be sending those out. That way, we can do some additional PR around that launch if you would like. You know, we have information for your website, social media pages, things like that. Um, but to give you an idea of what that letter that we mail out looks like, the beginning really is that educational piece, letting your residents know which portion of these lines that they're responsible for. But it is an introductory letter where the township helps to introduce the program to its homeowners. But it always states, we are the company providing it and it is 100% optional. Um, it does include the township logo or letterhead, so your residents there know this is a program that you're making available to them. But on all, on that is all of our information, our logo, our phone number, so they call us with questions or to enroll. Same thing, um, with our, they can go to our website, get lots of great information that way, um, or sign up there or return the letter in the mail to us. Um, we know the group has more than enough going on, so we do handle all the aspects of the program. We do the marketing, billing, claims and the customer service. Um, and for your partnership, the township actually does receive a revenue for your participation. So what you do receive is, um, 10% of all of the premiums that we do collect in the form of a revenue. Um, and that is paid on an annual basis. A lot of our partners do different things with this. Obviously, you all could do anything that you like. Um, some have used it to help residents that may be having trouble paying, um, uh, a municipal bill from month to month. Some use it for different public infrastructure projects or social services programs that we all know are looking for additional funding. Um, but it's really however, um, the township sees fit. Um, and lastly, we do have over 1,300 municipalities we partner with across the US. We have over 50 here in Pennsylvania. And in addition to being, um, endorsed by the National League of Cities, we also are endorsed and partnered with the Pennsylvania Municipal League and have saved Pennsylvania residents over $92 million in repair cost. Um, and lastly, uh, here's the list of the, the 51 partners. I know I have rambled on though this evening. Um, so I'm sure, um, the board, you may have some additional questions for me as well.
Any questions from the board?
I do, but I can wait.
I do too, but I don't have to go first either.
I do believe this presentation was, uh, at a Pennsylvania Municipal League Conference one year. I, I intend, intended it.
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can start. So I think that the, um, I think the education piece of this is great. I'm not sure about and won't be prepared to approve this this evening. So I'll start with that. The other side of it, so I'm, I'm, I have a few different concerns. One is that it, in the materials that come out, it may look like it's required or that it's, um, something that we're doing. I just, I have a concern about, you know, some kind of confusion. I just, I have a concern about, you know, some kind of confusion or a lack of clarity. Not that it's intentional anyway, but just, you know, as a resident receiving this with the township logo on it, it may look like it's something that's being required to do and, and I don't know that a homeowner couldn't get a better deal or better coverage from in addition to their insurance policy, their homeowner's insurance. So that's, you know, that, I don't know that. And so for us to say that this is, you know, the best deal for them, again, I think the education piece is great, so I don't know if there is a way we can, you know, use that because many people don't know that they can get in addition to their policy to cover this kind of thing. So, so that I think... I was wondering if we have other programs where we endorse a private company in this way? I guess that's, that's what I was wondering as well. So, and understanding their partnership with National League of Cities, you know, we're not heavily involved with them. We're, you know, more involved with PML, but so that's kind of, those are my starting questions.
Yeah, I sort of, yeah, no, and I also was a little nervous about it and wondering where UAJA and the State College Borough Water Authority and their endorsement of this also fits in. To me, it would seem more beneficial if there was some discussion with them about this.
Thank you. Yes, I meant to mention that as well.
If I may, I think the question that I think would be helpful is, is I think, Ashley, you mentioned that State College has been doing this for 10 years. And to answer Lisa, Lisa's question, how many participants are in State College? I don't think I got that from what you were saying and maybe I missed that. I apologize.
Yeah, I was wondering what other programs does Ferguson Township do that are similar where we're working with a, a marketing campaign, sending out something that endorses something, a service that residents can purchase? How do we, and on those, how are we clarifying that it's an optional service so that, so I'm looking for a comparison? For our township, yeah, for...
So one example that I can give that just comes to mind is we partnered with the National Citizen Survey. So we engaged their services to survey our citizens. They used our logo and they sent everything out. It's a little different in that we contracted services for them to survey our citizens.
Yeah, they were selling something.
It wasn't something that we were necessarily, you know, the design was set up differently for a different purpose, but that was, that's the only time I can think that we supported the use of our logo.
It looks like it's about, I had it end up maybe 20, $25, $30 a month percent. And so I just don't know what, how that compares to one in addition to somebody's home. Or anyway, so that, those were some of my questions and thoughts about.
I'm wondering if Ashley, Ashley, I think one comment Lisa had or question she asked was State College Borough Water Authority. Has there been any communications with our State College Borough Water Authority? Do they have a position or a concern or interest to support? Because I know that State College Borough and Belfont, the Borough of Belfont and other local municipalities participate. Has there been conversations with our local sewer authority or our local water authority?
Yeah. So I have never talked personally to the authority. I know I've talked to a lot of authorities across the state. I think because we have been partnered with the borough, so we are, you know, have marketed to the Borough of State College directly through a borough partnership. And I know that's actually been since 2013 that we've been partnered with the State College Borough specifically for their community. We have right now, it looks like just, just under 200 customers there and we save their residents over $50,000 in repairs in their community, but I haven't, I personally have never talked to the authority. I know I, I've been here 11 years with, with the company, I know, but I personally have not. I know we work, we work with all different types of entities, you know, it, you know, whatever is best for the community. I know you did have, also have a question regarding your local, your homeowner's policy. We have seen over the years that some homeowner's policies now have optional riders. That didn't used to be the case, but the big difference that we've seen is that the, your homeowner's optional rider typically has your homeowner's policy deductible, which also sometimes can be a barrier for a homeowner to get that issue taken care of because that's hard for them to come up with that money, as well as typically those homeowner's policies only cover your property. So normally the sewer line responsibility goes out into the right of way and that's not your property, but still your responsibility. So a lot of times there's that kind of gap in coverage. But what's nice about our program is, we say it multiple times in the letter, that it's voluntary and optional. We have, it can even include something, you know, if you want to check with your homeowner's policy to see if you have coverage and we, even if we enter into the agreement, we never send that letter out unless we're, we have the approval of the township of the letter being something that you're happy with because, you know, we don't want your residents to be confused. We want them to know it's completely voluntary and optional, really just a service that you're making available, but they don't have to sign up. So even if one person signed up, we still would serve that one resident here in the community.
Yes, Mr. Heller.
Yep. First, Ashley, I just want to say thank you so much for the presentation. When I first looked over this, I thought, oh, $26 a month. Personally, I'm always a fan of insurance, kind of protect, you know, help me out. I do have a couple of questions though, if you don't mind. Is this service still available if the township does not opt in?
So there are protections available through HomeServe, but not this specific program. So right now, HomeServe is our, other company I work for. We have, you know, sometimes television ads or things like that that are out there where they could go to HomeServe and sign up. We market this product through something, it's a different brand. It's called Service Line Warranties of America, where if you typed in, went to that website and typed in the zip code, this program would not be available. So our municipal partners, it's a typically better coverage for a lower premium than what's just available through like our direct-to-consumer, which is mainly television commercials or internet ads, things like that.
Okay. Thank you for that. And again, just some quick calculations and with approximately 200 customers in the borough, that's about $6,200 that the borough gets if it's 10% of the premiums. So $6,200 a year. If I understand that correct, Ashley?
It, yeah, it depends on what products that they sign up for, but it's 10% of all of the premiums we do.
So it's actually a maximum, if we look at just this, of the three types of services, about $6,200 for 200 residents. One of the things then I'd like to understand a little bit more about too, does this, and having family that are involved in HVAC in, in large cities, does this bump folks to the front of the line as compared to other customers? So if I'm a plumber and I sign up to be one of your providers that would get a call if a resident's having an issue, when you call me to tell me that there's an issue, does that mean I have to respond within, you know, be on-site to that resident within a half hour, 45 minutes? What's the service level agreement that you have with the plumbers?
So with our plumbers, we kind of, we have different levels if it's an emergency job or just, you know, I have a slow drain, things like that. But our standard service level is that homeowner is expected to receive a call from that plumber within four hours and expected to be at their home within 24 hours. So we do see typically a lot of, a lot quicker response time than if you're just calling someone, you know, and then you're worried, are they reputable? Are they going to give me a fair price or are they going to charge me emergency call-out fees, things like that?
Well, thank you for that because I know from personal experience and also speaking with residents, sometimes you can, you have to call around and maybe a plumber, if it's not an emergency, it's three to five days before they can hopefully get you on a calendar. And what we consider emergencies sometimes aren't plumbers' emergencies version, but, you know, that, the eye of the beholder in many ways. So those are my general questions and I appreciate this. I, at this point, I probably wouldn't be able to take a, make a, to vote positively or negatively on this one, so I still have more questions related to the borough, experiences of customers and other things.
Chair, I understand if the board would like to table this discussion, you know, ask the questions to get answers from Ashley to just to understand the program and we can certainly pick the conversation up at a later time.
I would move to table this vote.
And do we have a second on that?
This is Lisa. I'll second.
Thank you. I was, I was going to say, I don't think there's the votes here tonight for this, so, you know, I appreciate everyone's efforts to just table this so, you know, we can pick back up. I, I don't think there's like any pressing deadlines on this. It's not like, so definitely appreciate that. Any discussion on this or further discussion? All right, all those in favor of tabling, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nope. Thank you, Ashley.
Yeah, thank you for having me. If you think of any additional questions, just give me a call. I'm always happy to answer them.
All right, item 7.3, a discussion and approval of a minor subdivision plan for Maple Hill Farm located at 1507 Gatesburg Road in the Rural Agricultural Zoning District with conditions. And we will recognize the Planning and Zoning Director.
Thank you, Chair and Board. Provided in the agenda is the minor subdivision plan. It's titled Preliminary Final One-Lot Subdivision of Maple Hill Farm. It's dated December 12th, 2024. It is located at 1507 West Gatesburg Road. So this is in the northwest of Ferguson. It does consist of two tracks. Track one is about approximately 110.23 acres. Track two is 82.62 acres for a total of approximately 192.85 acres. The purpose of this is the plan proposes a 1.92 acre subdivision of track one in the eastern corner along Gatesburg Road. This would be for a future single-family use. The parcel is located in the agricultural security area and it does have a purchased agreement, or excuse me, easement through the Center County's purchase of agricultural conservation easement program. As a result, the, the Center County Agricultural Board approved the subdivision February 27th of this year. The Pennsylvania State Agricultural Land Preservation Board approved the subdivision April 10th. That was the reason that we held it from the last meeting so that, that no longer has to be a condition. It is already done. So the conditions that remain, it's the adoption of the sewage module, sewage planning module. That would be by resolution after this is approved. That is per Act 537, which does require the, the resolution. So you would see that likely at May 6th. The, the sewage planning module essentially, it identifies two possible locations where septic could go on the lot. And the existing home does have septic. The second condition is administrative items, which are nothing unusual. That's, as an example, GIS-compatible digital survey, a digital copy of the plan is provided. You know, a note that recognizes that a single-family detached dwelling may be placed on the property, updating the key to the map for scale. And another thing you see quite often, the removal of the notice sign and that all fees are paid and also signatures. And the recommendation is for approval.
All right. Thank you. I was going to say for, for those in the public that are following this, you can follow along by going to our website and clicking on meeting agendas and referencing the April 19th, the April 15th meeting to view the materials. You're also welcome to call the Planning and Zoning Director's office as well if you have any questions, just to put a plug in there so, you know, everyone has equal opportunities to be able to participate and understand what's going on in government. Any questions for the Planning and Zoning Director from the board? Not seeing any, I will entertain a motion at this time.
This is Matt and I moved that the Board of Supervisors approve the minor one-lot subdivision for Maple Hill Farms dated December 12th, 2024 with conditions as described.
Do we have a second?
This is Patty. I'll second.
Got a motion by Mr. Heller, second by Ms. Stevens. Any this board discussion? Right? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Item 7.4, a discussion and approval of a preliminary final land development plan for Gateway Self-Storage located at 2629 Gateway Drive in the Light Industry Research and Development IRD Zoning District and the Corridor Overlay District, COD, with modification, waiver, request and conditions. And I will recognize the Planning and Zoning Director.
Thank you, Chair and Board. The plan for the Gateway Self-Storage Land Development Plan is dated January 17th, 2025 as revised and the square footage is approximately 74,986. You'll note that's a slight update from what we were originally given. They gave, the, the engineer did a very specific review and that is the revised number. It's slightly smaller than what was presented to at the Planning Commission level. The overall footprint is still about 25,000 square feet, is still three stories with 587 storage units, so it didn't change. It's just a slightly more accurate number. Located at 2629 Gateway Drive and noting, oh, I'm sorry, it's on approximately 1.981 acres. Noting that we did have a resident give some input from an adjacent neighborhood that attended the Planning Commission meeting, expressed a desire for sidewalk connectivity to nearby parks. The Planning Commission did not make that a requirement and I don't know that it can be a requirement, but it wanted to note that because that is something that can inform future discussions as we talk about connectivity. We have a number of plans that are coming forward from, from everything from the comp plan to the Business and Innovation Economic Development Plan that is coming forward. So that way, we sort of have a placeholder for, can recognize that, that note. Planning Commission held a work session on March 10th and at their regular meeting on March 24th voted unanimously to recommend to the Board of Supervisors approval of the land development plan with modifications and waivers. Modifications are as follows. The first one is to allow the preliminary and final plan to be approved together as they are presented. The second is related to landscaping and buffer yards, to allow buffer yards to, essentially everything's just pulled in to avoid existing drainage and utility easements. And the third one is related to sidewalk locations. Along West College, if you go, if you were to look immediately along where the sidewalk would be required to be continued, there's a bit of a dip. That's where, when you're driving past there, that's my landmark when I drive by, that you'll see the guard rail and you look down, that's where the sidewalk would need to be. So they requested a modification to avoid some of the additional fill that would be required and the, the request is to put the, the ease, an easement on the private property side, well, on the, sorry, on the side, private property side of the property line and that is the request. That was looked at carefully by, the, the Planning Commission discussed this, this steep slope. The staff, particularly the, the township engineer, the police had a chance to, to look at it, to converse. The engineering company actually in between provided a, a video that demonstrated, they actually put a person down there and drove by to, to help, help inform, you know, the continued staff discussion even after the Planning Commission meeting. So all, all entities have had a chance to review it. The, the Planning Commission recommendation was to go ahead and recommend the, the easement. There'll still be a little topography, you know, there'll still be topography change, but it kind of skirts around a little bit. So that is what that is about there. And the, the other one is to allow one loading dock and the idea is people bring their stuff in, but, so they're, they're... and the idea is people bring their stuff in, but, so their, the loading dock is indicated that it's not really needed. However, buildings do turn over. That leaves some possibilities open should there ever be a change or a need. So therefore, they would still be providing the loading dock. So the conditions, typically, conditions are for things that are either incomplete or can't be completed initially, or to ensure that the modifications and waivers still meet the intent of the ordinance. The stormwater management plan would still need to be completed. And prior to the signing of the final plan, it's on again when we see, completion of administrative items, fees, title blocks, and then those sort of things. The sidewalk easement being, if it's approved, would need to be noted, and we'd also need a sidewalk easement agreement. And the completion of a PennDOT Highway occupancy permit to allow work within the West College right-of-way to meet the standards of both Ferguson Township and PennDOT, and that's related in part to the sidewalk installation, to allow the matchup and alignment to existing sidewalks. And also, finally, to add notes onto the final plan that note the approved modifications. And the, again, the recommendation is for approval, and we do have a representative present.
All right. Just another plug for some informational items on this. The plan, again, is posted on our website. We did make a lot of references to our ordinances. If you click on the Code of Ordinances button at the front of our page, there is a whole wealth of reading material that you can use and enjoy. And we did reference the Planning Commission meeting. You can watch Planning Commission meeting and all of our board meetings on cnet1.org on demand. So any questions from the board on this plan? Mr. Heller.
So I guess I want to unpack a little bit. A resident came and expressed concerns about connectivity, and those concerns are not being addressed?
I'll go ahead, Supervisor Heller, and share with you. So the concern is simply that we don't have sidewalk from, I think, in front of the MMA building clear down to the Bristol and West College Avenue corridor. And we noted it, and we are making a, of course, a matter of record by bringing it to the attention here in this public meeting. It's in the, it's in the notes of the Planning Commission, and now, of course, will be in the notes of this, of this meeting, because we recognize that there will be likely some discussions. You may recall through the conditional use that was approved by the Board of Supervisors for the MMA building that we have, the township has received by, from Penn State, an easement to construct sidewalk there from MMA, the MMA building to the intersection there at Blue Course and West College Corridor. And so from that point on, at some point in the future, should we construct the sidewalk there, there'll still be a lack of connectivity clear down. And so we're making that note, acknowledging that if the township in the future wants to pursue improving connectivity, we've also received comment from a citizen. To immediately take action, should the board want to make a policy decision to respond positively to that individual comment, it would be obviously costly, and it's not currently in the CIP. And so, you know, I would imagine that we might, we might have some discussions at some point if the board would like to pursue discussions about improving connectivity there along the West College Corridor. And so the initial preliminary response, if you would, would be, we will continue the conversation to see if the board would like to allocate funding in the CIP to improve connectivity there along the West College Corridor. And that would be what action we would be taking this evening in response to the feedback that we heard, would be the matter of record and then continuing discussions to see if the board is interested in allocating funding at a future time.
So, I'm sorry, maybe I had a different impression as to what I maybe heard. What I understood was that, and I'll just use my words, that this was brought there. So it's not the developer that would put these sidewalks in, or is not putting sidewalks in?
Well, if we have a land development plan, right, there would be a requirement to do a sidewalk in front of that, in the, of the location of which they're submitting. The comment, the way I understood it from the citizen, is that they would just like increase connectivity so they can, you know, so they could, they could walk from a location somewhere along West College Corridor. Where was the specific?
The neighborhood, the adjacent neighborhood.
The adjacent neighborhood, clear down to the, and I even asked, which park, right? Autumnwood Park or Hay Market? But the reality of it is, there is no current sidewalk. So yes, developers do, you know, install sidewalks, but, but there would not be a, we don't have any land development plans for the connectivity of which the citizen has requested connectivity for.
But if the developer wanted to put the sidewalks in, we wouldn't stop them, would we? If they were?
They didn't offer that. I mean?
Could they offer that? That's kind of where I'm going.
Well, it's an extended location. I mean, a lot of, like, they're doing it for their, for their purpose, like, right outside. And you might think of where the cog building is. The land development plan for the property is, is that vacant lot right there before you turn into the cog building. So we're talking about the sidewalk that would, or join right there next to the West College Corridor.
I think there's one house, too, that, to connect to that street. So basically, the side yard is what, as I recall, was what they wanted connected.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Are we able to view the plan? Because my computer keeps crashing.
Oh, we could pull the plan up, but I, but I just want to make one clarification before he speaks. The request from the citizen was for a significantly larger extension of sidewalk beyond what we are discussing for approval for the land development plan this evening.
Beyond this property that we're talking about?
Far beyond.
Thank you, because what I heard, and I apologize in this conversation, was that there was, and again, it was just what I had heard, was that, oh, no, there were conversations, and the developer, that's not going to happen. That sidewalks weren't going to be built, at least on this property. But it sounds like they are going to be built.
On the West College.
Yes, yes, we are proposing, well, first, I'm Mark Tredy with Pentera Engineering. And yes, we are proposing sidewalks along the property, my client's property, along West College Avenue. And also, there's a little bit on Gateway Drive on the cul-de-sac there also. We have, we're butting two different streets there, and that's where we're installing it. The resident, I think, was in the adjacent residential neighborhood there, and actually said they, they were requesting, you know, could sidewalks be extended down to the next street? And even that development inside, I went in, it doesn't have sidewalks in that development. It was probably one from the 70s, I'm guessing, somewhere around there. And then I asked him, well, it's something maybe you should talk to your HOAs about. They don't have an HOA about getting a sidewalk to connect to where ours stops. So it's something that I think was sent to Reese brought up about future connectivity. It would be basically extending it down to that next street for that community.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Patterson is recognized.
I just have a question on the timing of all of this. So to the extent that there are some stormwater conditions, I guess I'm curious why we didn't kind of get them all ferreted out and to make this approval for that?
No, we just have a couple of minor comments. The stormwater engineer just wants us to put another monitoring or access port in. Part of the stormwater, there's two parts of it. One of it is detention, which is underground, the park, under, under the parking lot, it's an underground system. And then the other part is, for infiltration, is a basin out in the front of the lot. And for the underground system, he's just requesting an additional inlet structure on the other end to have access to the underground system. And we're going to add that. We wanted to just get between these comments, the sidewalk, because we can't submit our HOP till we know where our sidewalk alignment is. So we're just waiting to get all these loose ends wrapped up in one revision and get it back to the township. But it isn't any, the stormwater comment is not anything that we're concerned about. We just got to add an inlet on, onto that underground stormwater system for access.
Thank you. And this is more for staff. What's been the, was this, if I remember correctly, this is a January submittal, and here we are in May for approval, is that accurate? April, sorry? Okay, and that's 90, 100 days or something like that? And we have standardized 180 days to get something through the process, is that accurate?
So I haven't looked to see how many days it's been. You know, I'll look to Mr. Tredy. I, you know, I think that we facilitated this in a pretty smooth expedited process, especially in comparison to our historical patterns.
Yes, no, it's been, it's been very smooth.
Thank you. But we certainly, yeah, we certainly can count the days and, and report on how short or close we were. But, but I, I mean, I yield the floor to Mr. Tredy and ask him to speak candidly if he has any comments about timing.
Yeah, I mean, it went very well, the coordination with the staff and everything. And like I says, we're just taking care of a couple of loose ends, get the sidewalk worked out, because, so we can then move forward with our HOP plans. And we wanted to just, rather than, we wanted to get all these last ones in on the final submittal and get that back in whenever we address the approval conditions, so. But nothing's really outstanding that we're, you know, I'm not going to be coming back to and say, oh, we couldn't meet that, so.
Is there any other questions?
It does, thank you. And so now that begs a follow-on question. Mr. Tredy, have you done a lot of work in Ferguson through the years?
Yes, I've been working at Pentera for over 30 years. I've done a few here and there.
A few. Appreciate that. And how did this process compare to years past?
I'm sorry, didn't hear.
How did this process compare in years past?
Oh, it was much better. It was very, very good, just looking at it and going through. And the coordination with the staff is very, was very good, too, on everything. So it just, that, the stormwater review went timely also. And that was probably, usually, the stormwater just takes a little bit longer, but that was a very timely review where, you know, we just have one minor comment, and we're all set with that.
Very good. So I think my final ask, and maybe it's more, it's not a yes/no, it's just a more of a, feel free to answer yes or no, but will you tell your friends about this more smooth process?
Yes, I will. Actually, I have. I've talked to, I mean, I've talked to several clients and that, and a couple of architects already, so I've already done that.
Fantastic, thank you. More questions from the ministry?
Any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion. I was gonna say, let's not wait till the 180-day mark.
This is Patty. I move that the Board of Supervisors approve the Gateway Self-Storage Land Development Plan dated January 17, 2025, revised February 24, 2025, with modifications and conditions as described.
Do we have a second?
This is Lisa, I'll second.
Got a motion by Ms. Stevens, second by Ms. Strickland. Any board discussion on this?
I just wanted to say, thanks for including the minutes from the Planning Commission, very specifically, the segments of, you know, both of those discussions. It was so helpful, in particular, around the sidewalk discussion, because that was complicated. The ordinance requires it a certain way, you know, it needs to be altered. And so that's really, really helpful. It saves you from going to CNET and watching if you didn't catch it, so, thanks for that. Yeah, yeah, it's very, it's very useful.
I just told them to go to CNET, we're losing their ratings. Anything else? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nope. Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Tredy.
Thank you again. I says, I says, it was a good process here, really, you know, with some improvements that was nice just to go through and ran very smoothly, so. I'm going to thank, basically, you should thank your staff on that, too, so, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Definitely appreciate the feedback there.
Thank you for being a photographer earlier, Jim.
Yes. Any communications to the board? I don't think I had anything. Any calendar items of note? If no. Yes, Mr. Patterson.
I don't know if you mentioned it earlier, I apologize, but, but really thank the tour that we did at UAJ, very enlightening, and definitely some long discussions coming based on that tour. But it was really awesome, thank you.
If there is nothing else, I will refer to Ms. Stevens to introduce item number 10.
Let's do it, you're in.
And do we have a second? All right, we're returned, have a good evening.